Article 50. This is a noise bylaw. I ask especially that you look at your Finance Committee booklet and at handouts so that you will have the text of Article 50 before you. It's a long article, and I'm sure you would rather not have me read it. Is there a motion under this article?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Minier.
I move in terms of the article except, there are four items, and they are as before you in your script. Do I -- should I read the four items?
I would read the changes.
One, I move in terms of the article except one. Delete paragraph C of Section 1. Redesignate paragraph D as paragraph C and paragraph E as paragraph D. Two, delete the words "and receipt" from the last sentence of Section 3. Three, designate the paragraph under Section 4 as paragraph A. Four, add --
Okay, slow down. It's on the screen.
Three, designate the paragraph under Section 4 as paragraph A. Four, add a paragraph B to Section 4 to read. If the person or persons responsible for an activity which violates Section 1 can be determined, any person or persons who violate Section 1 of this bylaw after the written warning required by Section 3 of this bylaw may be arrested without a warrant provided that the violation occurs in the presence or view of any officer authorized to serve criminal process.
That is the motion before you, in terms of the article with the exceptions that are listed here. These are the exceptions. And there was a second. You may speak to it.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes? If you can't read it, it can be read again to you, and I will before we vote on it, or I'll do it again now if it must be. Can you see it now? No? Okay. All right. I'm going to ask Mr. Minier to do it one more time. Locate the four changes that are being made, and Mr. Minier will read through them, and you can find your own text and make the changes.
I moved in terms of the article with the exception, with four exceptions. One, delete section, paragraph C of Section 1, and re-letter the following two paragraphs. D becomes C, E becomes D. Two, delete the words "and receipt" from the last section, from the last sentence of Section 3. Three, there is a paragraph under Section 4. Designate that paragraph A.
Whoa, whoa. Four, where it says, okay, here we go. Four says other remedies. What? Whoa, 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 whoa. Section 4 is in the, Section 4 is in the book. It's under, it's on page, what?
It's in the white packet, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, but I'm looking for the, all right, let's see where it is, or where it is. We can't change it if I can't find it. So Section 4 has just been omitted? Is it in the warrant? I don't even have a copy of the warrant. Okay, so what we're saying is that the Finance Committee booklet has left out paragraph 4. What? Okay. It was, it was in the warrant which was distributed to you. It's regrettable that it was left out here, but it is, it certainly makes it legal because it was in the original warrant. So what we're saying is the original warrant contains this Section 4, and that Section 4 is now being labeled A by the Minier revision. First paragraph?
After the title. Section 4, other remedies, then A.
That's right. Other remedies is now paragraph A, and he is adding a paragraph B to it, which is at the bottom. So Section 4, which you didn't have at all, is now two paragraphs. The one in the warrant, which says other remedies, and the one that Mr. Minier added as part of his motion at the bottom. So those two paragraphs now constitute Section 4.
Mr. Moderator, I believe the title, other remedies, governs both paragraphs, and what we're talking about is A and B once we're beyond the title.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Let me read paragraph B, the new paragraph. If the person or persons responsible for an activity which violates Section 1 can be determined, any person or persons who violate Section 1 of this bylaw after the written warning required by Section 3 of this bylaw may be arrested without a warrant provided that the violation occurs in the presence or view of any officer authorized to serve criminal process.
Okay, I guess it's ready for consideration now. Mr. Minier, you wish to speak to it?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Many communities, it's not simply, academic communities with dormitory populations run into periodic problems with noise. Our experience is that 99-plus percent of the noise problems can be and are resolved amicably through the diplomacy and tact of the neighbors and our police and the goodwill of some of the offenders. But the 1 percent, or something less than 1 percent, do constitute a real problem. This bylaw gives the police one more tool to work with addressing that problem. The board is unanimous in favor of Article 50. Chief Maya is here to respond to specific questions about the article.
Article is before you. It's a noise ordinance, yes.
Nancy Gordon, Precinct 4. Has the board checked the constitutionality of this provision which permits you to make an arrest without a warrant?
Mr. Maya. Mr. Maya.
The answer is yes. We had Town Council check that very specifically. I guess probably the best way to answer that is the same way, or use the same word that Mr. Minier used. This is another tool. It's a law that the officers have to use. Presently, if an officer takes arrest action, and an officer is able to make an arrest, if there is a breach of the peace, if the offense allows, is to the extent that is a breach of the peace and happens in the officer's presence or view, the officer has the right to then make an arrest. So this is no more than what we presently have. What we're saying is we want the same type of discretion to be available to the officers in using this tool, which is more specific than just disturbing the peace. If I could maybe speak for a minute more --
Yes, you may, certainly.
-- to maybe the history of this so that you know why this is on the floor before Being an Amerist and being the type of community we are, disturbances are, you know, kind of an ongoing thing, particularly fall. They kind of cool down when you close your windows in the winter, and then in the spring, once the sap starts flowing from the maple trees, the noise seems to pick up again. So this is something of a community thing that we hit kind of on a cyclical basis. And it's one of the things that we deal with the vast majority of the time. Two weeks ago, my office responded to 100 disturbances in one weekend. And they vary from everything in this bylaw and maybe a couple more. And that was out of 248 calls that weekend. So you can see that the extent of work relative to disturbance is very much of a problem for the department and for the town, which is where we get the calls. So we've been looking at this for a long time, from members of the community who have asked us to see if we couldn't come up with a better method of dealing with disturbances. We've looked at it from a staff basis within the department. We've talked to people relative to decibel meters and the use of decibel meters to ascertain whether or not the disturbance is real. I think most of us know when a disturbance is a disturbance, and we really don't need decibel meters, although we are going to look and have looked into the idea of using decibel meters to base this action on. And I was using it as a tool similar to what officers use, a radar set to detect speed, so that you have that as a basis. And, you know, we're very fortunate. An individual has moved into town just recently who is an expert in that field of the use of decibel meters and using them with a bylaw, and we will be working with that individual this summer to start to look at that very seriously. But this is basically at the request of the community. I've got to say that Frank Fortino, a member of this group, has done a lot of work in this regard. He's been very helpful. It was Frank who really found this bylaw being used at the home of Michigan State and Lansing, or East Lansing, I guess it is, and has brought it to our attention. We had been looking at various bylaws in various places, and all of them were rather confusing. This is kind of clear and concise, and I think the officers would be able to use this in a very fair and equitable way. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Right back there.
Helen Rehm, Precinct 1. Why did you leave out fireworks and such as explosive?
Okay, the basic reason for that was is there are other laws that cover the explosive, the explosion of that, specific laws in Massachusetts to deal with this. This is the wording that was up in Michigan. We didn't feel that we needed it.
Yes.
Joyce Burkin, Precinct 9. Is there an ordinance that covers the noise that's created by construction, either road repairs, carpentry work at 7:30 and 8:00 in the morning, and other kinds of daytime offending sounds in terms of one's concentration? I'm having some trouble seeing whether it is discriminatory in some way against certain types of noise as opposed to other kinds of noise.
To answer your question first, we have no bylaw relative to that. I believe there is something in the town bylaws that indicate nothing can start prior to 7:00 a.m. I'm not certain about that, but I think there is something on that.
Yes.
Morris Golden, Precinct 3. I have a couple of things in mind. One is my ignorance, this is my first term here, my ignorance of legal language. Does unlawful noise prohibited mean anything, or is it a tautology? Isn't anything unlawful by definition prohibited? And the other thing is I think the Section 1A seems kind of strongly subjective. I have a very low tolerance for hard rock, for example. I would find myself in pain if it was played fairly low. Someone else may have a low tolerance for something else. Is it not very much dependent on one's own definition of things like necessary and disturbing and so on?
Chief Maya.
I believe relative to the unlawful, unlawful noise prohibited, that is the title of that section, I don't think it has any significance other than, as it indicates in the first sentence, it shall be unlawful for any of these noises to happen. I guess that's probably why we hire police officers, to act as, not interpreters, but as, not judges either, but to investigate the complaints that you may have about hard rock. They may not feel that that's that disturbing because it is hard rock, but they may, they may think that maybe something else is. So then it would be up to them to take action. If they didn't do what you wanted them to do, then you complained to me, see? Well, you know, of the complaints that we get, you know, the officers often make their reports that in their opinion the noise was not significant to warrant any action. That does happen.
Mary Andrews, Precinct 10. I'm very supportive of this article, but I feel that there was an important element left out.
Can there be a word to say?
I'm coming.
Please go.
I'd like to add.
Please go forward.
Very supportive of this article, but I felt that there was an important element that was left out and perhaps should be addressed. Since I don't have a copy of the original, I only have the Finance --
Are you going to move this amendment?
Yes.
Would you do that first, then you can speak to it?
Well, I don't have the copy of the, I only have the Finance Committee booklet, so I'm not sure where it should come in because mine is missing.
Do you have a copy now? Okay.
I move to amend the article to include under penalties, if the violation occurs on the premises rental property which has a non-resident owner, then the owner must also be notified in writing that the violation has occurred.
Is there a second?
Should I address this?
Yes, you may. You have five minutes to address it.
Well, I don't need five minutes, but as strange as it may seem, many of the landlords do not know what occurs on their property. And I had a very good example of that next door to my own property on Friday night when there was a very large gathering. A fair estimate would be perhaps 200 people on a very small piece of property. I happened to see the landlady on Sunday, this was two days later, and I said, are these same people going to be here through the summer? And she said, no, only one or two of them. And I said, well, are you aware of what happened here on Friday? And she was totally unaware that this had happened at her property. It was a very large gathering. In fact, I think the police were there three times. And finally, they did, they did an excellent job by the way of removing the people little by little without causing a disturbance. They're very much to be commended. But it's obvious that some of the landlords can't correct these things, cannot speak to their tenants, they just simply don't know. And if I didn't happen to see her and mention it, these people who were in charge of this large gathering would think that this was perfectly permissible, and the landlord didn't mind. They were never reprimanded. And I think as well as the tenants being notified in writing, the landlord should also be notified that this violation had occurred on their property.
Chief Maya.
The only part about that would be if the landlord or the owner could be notified, if we're able to ascertain that. That would be the only question, yeah. I have no problem with that. That's one of the problems that we have actually is getting a hold of the landlords or the owners and letting them know. Well, one thing, you know, in the work that we've done with this, we've worked very closely with most of the apartment complex owners. In fact, they have had a number of meetings this year. Ever since the drinking age went from the 18 to the 20 and then to the 21, that's what's happened, is the parties have gone from the bars and the on-campus, you know, social areas and off-campus because of the policies of the university relative to drinking on campus, and they've gone into the residential areas and into the apartment areas, which is why the problem has really generated where it is. But the apartment owners, through their legal counsels, have now come up with a lease, which is going to be very helpful, we think, to addressing the unreasonable behavior that some of their tenants have. And I mean unreasonable, the parties of 200, that's normal Friday and Saturday night party in most of these apartment areas. Oftentimes, the officers go in there unable to distinguish just where the party is because it's in so many apartments. And there are people here that could probably speak to that better than I. But this, I don't see a problem with this, as long as we're able to contact the owner, and we would be able to do that through the assessments records, I would think.
Okay, we have it before us for consideration. Back row.
Normanson, Precinct 2. Could Chief Maya tell us what laws the police have been using in the past? If you're called to a party three or four times, what laws are being enforced then?
Chief Maya.
Okay, you have to realize that these situations, we're addressing these situations, in other words, we're addressing the whole town on a Friday and Saturday night with seven or eight officers in total. They're running into parties. Most of the disturbance that we get, they're able to cope with on a first call basis because of, you know, the people, once they hear that there's a complaint about whatever they are doing, are very reasonable. The vast majority are reasonable. But then we run into the ones who are unreasonable, the laws that we're using are disturbing the peace, and then if an individual becomes to the point of being, you know, totally unreasonable and cannot be dealt with, then you have the ability of disorderly person. Also, the protective custody laws, if they are intoxicated to the point, you know, can really also be used. One of the problems that you run into in this type of a conflict situation is, is you're dealing with approximately 200 people, many of whom are highly intoxicated, and when you start to take any type of physical action, you oftentimes may be building more into the situation than what you're solving. So I would say that my offices have used extremely good discretion so that nobody has ever had to really be hurt in one of these situations. A lot of patience, maybe. They've taken a lot of verbal abuse and some physical abuse in handling these situations. It's, it is probably one of the more difficult things that they run into when they don't look forward to dealing with spring and fall for sure.
Over to Far side, yes.
I want to know if, yes, Florence Frank, Precinct 4. I live just down the street from Mary Andrews and just a few blocks from Southwest. Will this apply to when they have a shouting contest at 2:00 in the morning at Southwest or a rock concert on Sunday from noon to 6:00? Or is the university not involved?
Chief Maya.
The latest understanding I have from Town Council in that regard is that the bylaw would probably be in effect on camp, on the Amerist portion of the campus. From my perspective relative to enforcement, the university campus, we do not believe is within our jurisdiction, so we would notify the university to take whatever appropriate action there was to take. I know that's not clear, but that's a situation which has never been extremely very clear, never really been addressed.
Back there. Yeah.
Mary Matthews, Precinct 2. I'm supportive of this article. I'm just a little troubled by one section. That is Section 1.
We're speaking for and against the amendment now.
Oh, excuse me.
We haven't voted on the amendment yet.
Sorry.
All right, let me read the amendment again. The amendment that was offered is to be attached to the end of the penalty section, which is that paragraph that's just disappearing. Okay. The penalty section would have added to it, if the violation occurs on the premises of rental property which has a non-resident owner, then the owner must also be notified in writing that the violation has occurred. That's the amendment we're speaking for and against right now. Yes.
Richard Miller, Precinct 10. Can I move the question on the amendment?
Okay. Question has been called on the amendment. That would stop debate if two-thirds of you agree. All in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
Nay.
Aye seem to have it. Ayes have it. We're coming to an immediate vote now. A yes vote by majority would attach. What? Motion for the previous question.
No, room for more?
Oh. We just voted to stop debate on the amendment. It's all right. You can come back. I make mine too. The motion was to stop debate on the amendment. A yes vote would attach that amendment to the bottom of the penalty section, and no vote would throw it away. If it's attached, then that will be the form in which the overall motion appears, and it will be up for debate, discussion, and consideration in its entirety. All in favor then of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
Nay.
Aye seem to have it. Ayes have it, okay. That amendment is now added to the penalty section, and it is open for further debate and discussion. Yes, center.
Peter Murphy, School Committee. Mr. Moderator, I have a problem with finding the article in its proper form as to what we're voting on. In the Finance Committee booklet, there's no Section 4. It seems that there's part of Article 52 at the bottom of page 62 within Article 50, and it doesn't look like Section 4 on the screen. I don't see anything like that. Further, in the warrant itself, I have Section 4, other remedies.
That's right. Okay? You? The warrant. The warrant says Section 4, other remedies. That text, this paragraph, has an A in front of it. That is now labeled paragraph A right before the if. This section at the bottom is the text of paragraph, from here on is the text of paragraph B. Section 4 now has two paragraphs, A and B.
And that's what we'll be voting on here.
That's, we are, the screen, the screen is correct, the warrant is correct, the Finance Committee booklet in this case is in error. It's a typographical error or whatever. Yes.
Barbara Ford, Precinct 2. Does this, I support this warrant also, but I would be interested to know if this also covers muffled or unmuffled off-road vehicles that are riding around in the woods that disturb houses that are so placed in the vicinity.
Chief Maya.
Good question if we can catch them. It's a good question if we can catch them. We have, under the recreation vehicle law, there is, you know, laws relative to that. Under the motor vehicle law, there is also laws relative to the unbridled noise of a motor vehicle. Devices, I don't know whether this one is in here or not, to be perfectly honest with you, but we'd still have, let's see. I would say yes under Section 1, the preamble, just under the general unlawful noise to disturb unreasonably.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Charlotte Westhead, Precinct 5. It's not clear to me in Section 3 who pays the penalty when there's the, the first violation shall be punished by a fine. Who pays the fine? The people creating the noise or the owners?
Chief Maya.
We have very seldom had to deal with owners relative to this. This is in here for those situations where we would have to go to that extent. The first job an officer would have when he gets to the scene of one of these situations is to identify who is in charge of the party. Generally, who is on the lease, the individuals who have control of the premise. Determine who that is, issue the warning to that individual. Whoever would first get the first warning would be the individual, even if they left the scene at that stage of the game, which happens sometimes when we respond, the first party is just, you know, when you go back the second time, that party just isn't in the house. Of course, we know better, but whoever got the warning would be the individual who would be charged.
Yes, Mr.?
Jerry Gray, Precinct 7. Question under section, paragraph E of Section 1. Is that applied to the drum beating on the town common that is sometimes used by what I think are religious groups?
No. They are on the, the town common comes under another bylaw, where that is the activities of the common are governed by the Board of Selectmen and by the town manager relative to permit.
An acquaintance sent me a lease and asked that I bring it to your attention. So rather than rely on my inept voice, I come here. This is a lease from, and the chief referred to one in the making, but this is apparently something binding a currently living individual in Amerist, and it's from one of the major property management firms. And one of the sections says, this is under lessee obligations, and the les agree to do these things, and what is, and the split infinitive is les, to expressly respect the needs and rights of other residents for the quiet and peaceful enjoyment of their property, with the understanding that receipt by the lessor of two complaints regarding noisy or offensive conduct during the term hereof may constitute sufficient grounds for eviction at the option of the lessor. So that it appears that already the property management firms are moving in this direction. Now, I should say that in some ways this bylaw exceeds my fondest dream since I've gone through life with the -- gone through life with the sort of Damocles that some kid with electronic stuff would move in next door to me. And I've just been very lucky because I've had dozens and dozens of students living in an old Victorian next to me and they've been, without exception, superb neighbors. That is, they've been quiet, whether they're, whether otherwise morally upright is of no interest to me. I, somewhat like Morris, I cherish quiet to a fault, but I have to say, since no one else has said it, and since presumably I represent a diverse bunch of people, that being more of an old-fashioned liberal, I, I recognize that this has, you know, a fairly broad reach and that there are persons unlike myself who are naturally exuberant. And nevertheless, I would say that unfortunately, making noise has an impact upon others, whereas quiet creates a kind of space within which you can do a lot of things, including enjoying noises within the comfort of your own home and such, that, that quiet is a very blessed state for doing just such a range of things in this town, studying of course, but just enjoying family or whatever, that I, I, I have no final, I find I have no fears because the chief used the term, which I think is the proper term, and I, my comfort is not because he uses it, but because so far as I can tell, it's actually well-used in practice. That is the term discretion. And there is a, you'll be pleased to know, a literature on policemen. And finally, you know, the, the police don't arrest you every time you ride 21 miles an hour in a 20-mile zone and such, that there is some discretion. And Chief Maya, by observation, is not a crazy man. And the, the police department has behaved in such a fashion that I don't think they'll go around, Elaine asked me about playing the violin, you know, I think if your kid is overdoing this Suzuki, whatever his method, you know, I don't think they'll, they'll jail him. So this is, this is a, this is a wonderful advance and will no doubt be used sensibly and, and we try to be tolerant when there are 200 kids on the lawn down the block celebrating, but when, you know, beyond limits. So this is good. I prove it.
This, this ordinance, as I understand it, this, this bylaw, would, if you were to decide to endorse it, be reviewed by the Attorney General for compliance with all sorts of things that the state does before it is authorized for us to enforce? Yes.
Kenton Tharp, Precinct 1. Follow-up to the question over here. Would this apply to either the Buddhist drum beating or any other religious organization in terms of going down the streets of the town? I mean, I understand if you have a permit in the town common, that's different, but...
Again, I guess you deal with the, you know, there are terms of, of anything which would touch or, or might apt to touch on most anybody's activity, which is where the officer's discretion then comes into play. If they chose to bang drums at 2:00 a.m. in the morning past your house, you might even complain. But, you know, this is something which does not occur. You know, people who are reasonable in the manner in which they do things are not going to be dealt with this bylaw. It is people who are unreasonable that we have to go to more than once probably that are going to have to deal with this type of a bylaw.
More to be said, yes.
Alice Carlos, Precinct 2. I noticed that the part about shouting and whistling includes hours, 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., when you're not supposed to shout and whistle. And the earlier section on radio, photograph, musical instruments, et cetera, has no hours. This kind of bothers me because of the recent experience that we had in our neighborhood when some youthful people wanted to have a party, came around, invited us all to come, explained to us they would have live music, et cetera. And I consider this youthful exuberance and, you know, not something terrible. And it was done in the daytime, no real harm done, but under this bylaw, I think people could very well complain.
Chief Maya.
Yes, I think you're 100% right. People could complain, but again, there are activities in Amherst, particularly in certain areas of Amherst where, where activity during this time of year is acceptable. I mean, there are times, there has been two or three times this year that various fraternities and sororities have had events. And the hours of their events have been, as you mentioned, during the daytime, you know, during reasonable hours. And as a result, they've even received permits, have hired officers to make sure that there was no problem at the party and it was handled very well and there were, and there were no problems. If there had been complaints in those types of situations, the officers would have spoken to the complainants and informed them of that. One of the things we've always done, when, when someone comes to us and says, we're going to have a party, I've always said, invite your neighbors. I said, even if they don't go, they'll be a little bit more, more tolerant than they would have been if you hadn't asked.
Yes, I'll run that route.
Carpenter, Precinct 1. I move the previous question.
Question has been moved in second. If two-thirds of you vote yes, we'll come to an immediate vote on the motion before you with the amendment that we have added. All in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye. Pose nay. Aye seem to have it. Ayes have it, we're coming to an immediate vote then on the motion before you. And I'm going to take just a second or two to go over that. Your Finance Committee booklet does in fact have the text that is on the higher part of the screen. The variation takes place in Section 4. Section 4, the part that you have only in the warrant, is now labeled A and it says, Other Remedies A. If the person or persons responsible for an activity which violates Section 1 cannot be determined, the person in lawful custody and/or control of the premises, including but not limited to the owner, lessee or occupant of the property on which the activity is located, shall be deemed responsible for the violation. We have added a second paragraph, you have added a second paragraph to the, a second paragraph was added to the motion, which says B under Other Remedies to Section 4, this in addition to Section 4. If the person or persons responsible for an activity which violates Section 1 can be determined, any person or persons who violate Section 1 of this bylaw, to the warning required by Section 3 of this bylaw, may be arrested without a warrant, provided that the violation occurs in the presence or view of any officer authorized to serve criminal process. The amendment that we attached to the bottom of the penalty section, if you will read in your Finance Committee booklet where we end up on Section 3, the bottom of Section 3 penalties, we have added, if the violation occurs on the premises of rental property which has a non-resident owner, then the owner must also be notified in writing that the violation has occurred. Those changes with the addition of the change that is mentioned in the, in the motion, which is to delete Paragraph C of Section 1, redesignate the paragraphs, and then in 2, to delete the words and receipt from the last sentence of, sentence of Section 3, Section 3 right above you. I think I've covered all those things. If there's anyone who is unsure, let me know and we'll pound away at it until we all know what we're voting on. Yes, yes.
In the Finance Committee, excuse me, Lee Beatty, Precinct 1. In the Finance Committee book, the distribution of cigarettes is included under unlawful noise that's prohibited. Is that up there?
It is not, and that's where the typographical letter corrected it.
But it's not Article 51, it's just extra.
We have, we have the correct text before us and this is what we're voting on. The warrant and this text. Okay, I think we've got agreement. All in favor of the motion which is before you, please say aye. Pose nay. Aye seem to have it. Ayes have it to vote. Article 51. Town bylaws. It's another bylaw proposal, prohibition of open containers of alcohol.